Alrighty, good morning Commissioners. Over to you Chair Harrington.
Good morning everyone and welcome to our set of meetings this Tuesday, May 6th. We are here in the Board of Commissioners, Board of Directors Work Session Meeting. We have a full complement of board members. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioners Jerry Willie, Commissioner Nefesifi and Commissioner Jason Snyder. The first item on today's work session is to check in on our formal agendas. Today, we'll pause this meeting before 10:00 and adjourn into the auditorium for the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting with a couple of different public hearings on that. Does anyone have any questions on Habad? Then we'll go to the regular business meeting with sixteen items on the consent agenda, a couple of proclamations. I assume we're all set on people reading those. One public hearing, a couple of action items. Any questions on that? Go ahead Commissioner Trees.
I just have a question on the third item, the consent agenda. It's the award contract for financial audit services to Moss Adams. I, this is not in relationship to the RNO, correct?
No, this is the regular financial audit.
Okay, I just wanted to say that publicly.
Oh, thank you, okay. This week, Wednesday night, we also have the Senate District 13 Appointment Meeting that will be on Zoom, starting at 7:00 PM. The Secretary of State asked me to chair that meeting of the three different boards. You all should have received the very simple forms that we've gotten as well as the nomination list by email. Okay, any other questions on formal meetings? Alrighty, seeing none, we'll go to our next item for the applicants for the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. Welcome to our staff.
Thank you so much. Well, good morning Chair Harrington, good morning Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mira Samantha Lee, she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. With me today is Kirsten Oster, Developmental Disabilities Program Manager, who will be presenting for your consideration our applicants for the DD Advisory Council. I will go ahead and turn it over to Kirsten.
Thank you Mira. Good morning Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. My name is Kirsten Oster and I'm the Program Manager for the Developmental Disabilities Division and the designated support staff to our Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. So today I will be providing an overview of the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council, the 2025 recruitment for the open positions and recommendations. Hopefully short and sweet. The DD Council is a fifteen-member council that serves in an advisory capacity to the Washington County Department of Health and Human Services. The council provides input on program development, planning, monitoring and funding matters. The council meets one time a month and at an agreed upon time, these past few years, the majority of our meetings have been on Microsoft Teams. However, we are able to support two hybrid meetings a year. Being able to offer the virtual and hybrid options has made it easier for council members to attend and be able to engage in the important discussions. Members of the DD Council are advocates, people accessing developmental disability services, professionals in the field, provider representatives and family members. Positions on the council are not specified by the bylaws and current council members are focused on housing needs for people and families experiencing intellectual developmental disabilities, safety for the community and equitable barrier-free access to DD services. A priority of the council this year is to raise awareness to key issues impacting the ADD community and advocacy for Spanish-speaking and non-English speaking community members and services providers. A few examples of those key issues include ensuring adequate funding to local developmental disability programs, finding affordable housing for people with intellectual developmental disabilities, safety and protective services and continued emphasis on supports for employment. In addition, the council provided ideas to expand our division's outreach efforts for the emergency supply grant received last year and provided input on the script created for our division's video, which is an overview of DD services now on our website. For this recruitment period, we had eight vacancies with six applicants. Five of those applicants are seeking reappointment. We have invited all applicants to recent council meetings and have included them in our resource sharing activities and offered opportunities for community engagement activities. In addition, as a division, we have been continuously expanding our community outreach efforts, including recruitment for the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. This has included redesigning the council's promotional materials to be more intentional about the work the council does and using clear language. For the previous years, our case management teams have been critical in the past recruitments and supporting family members to take the first step in public advocacy. Now, the division and the council are working to add more individuals who are accessing DD services on the council. Through these outreach efforts and feedback from case managers, people accessing services have been focusing their energies on finding employment, housing and other basic needs before they are able to begin participating on the council. We will continue to focus our recruiting efforts to those who are accessing services and are excited to see who the new applicants are for next. The Health and Human Services Department recommends the appointment of Eddie Plard and the reappointments of Dan Pescia, Angela Braddock, Beck McShane, Lucia Benavides and Jenny Sisneros to the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. I have put together a summary of each candidate, beginning with the newest applicant and concluding with a tenured applicant seeking reappointment. So Eddie Plard is a person accessing developmental disability services who lives in an adult foster care home here in Washington County. Eddie is also a governor-appointed member of the Oregon Council on Developmental Disabilities and the current co-chair of that council. Eddie would like to share his experiences with the council and the division to make foster, adult foster care homes and group homes better in Washington County. Next is Lucia, Lucia Benavides is a parent of two children with developmental disabilities and is a certified community health worker. Lucia serves on the Alejandro Mujeres Health Equity Team and is President of the Hillsborough School District's Latinx Special Education Committee. Lucia understands the needs of families who speak languages other than English must overcome to obtain services for their children and has worked with our intake and eligibility supervisor to expand our outreach efforts. Lucia is also an advocate for the community and meets monthly with a group of Spanish-speaking families to help connect them with needed resources in Washington County and would like to continue building on the work she has already started. Angela Braddock is next. She is a parent of a child with a developmental disability and advocates for her daughter and other individuals who do not have a support system. Angela also volunteers with the Washington County Sheriff's Office in the Elder Safe Program and serves on the Board of Directors for Self-Determination Resources Inc., located in Beaverton. Angela would like to continue with the council to provide feedback to the division regarding service delivery and to network with others to share her experiences and improve the services system. Next is Jenny Sisneros, is a parent of two girls with developmental disabilities and is the founder and executive director of the Peruvian Cultural Festival in Portland. Jenny is certified by the Oregon Care Partners, providing trainee to families and professional caregivers. Jenny is also an advocate for her community and is involved in many of the division's community engagement efforts and resource fairs. Jenny would like to continue to provide the advocacy for those that are unable to advocate for themselves and focus on equity in the developmental disability services system. Beth is next. There are a lot of folks today. Is a parent of an individual that experiences developmental disabilities. Beth is the Executive Director of Miss Oregon Scholarship Foundation and is the former Executive Director of the Northwest Autism Foundation. In addition, Beth and her daughter are very active in the community engagement activities of the council, including reading the 2023 Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month Proclamation and participating in the new video the division has added to our website. Beth would like to be appointed, to be reappointed to another term as she is interested in overseeing and advising on all aspects of funding for developmental disability services in Washington County. Last but not least is Dan Pescia, is the Executive Director of Self-Determination Resources in Beaverton, which provides case management services and supports individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities here in the county. Dan has worked for over thirty years in the field and provides valuable insight to the council. Dan was an advocate for the division and played a key role in securing state rebalance funding for all community developmental disability programs throughout the state, including Washington County. Dan's knowledge of the DD services system and community has been a cornerstone of this council and has had great influence across the state. Dan would like to continue with the council for another term to ensure people with developmental disabilities receive appropriate quality services here in Washington County. The applicants who are reapplying have been contributing in a meaningful way and if reappointed will provide the council and our division valuable insight, historical context and guidance as the division continues to lead with equity and barrier-free services. Thank you for the opportunity to present our candidates for the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council today. And as a staff member that has been working with the council for over three years, I'm honored to support this wonderful diverse group of individuals who represent our community, the community we support and Washington County. I'm happy to take questions from the board. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about any of these applicants or any comments?
I'm just impressed by the quality of them. Seriously.
And the diversity. The new applicant is really brings a perspective that I don't think we've seen before living in an adult foster care home, so good work, thank you.
Yes, Eddie is going to be a great asset to the council and for the division.
Did he find out about this position? How, did somebody reach out to him or did he go look on the website or?
Eddie is really engaged in the community. For example, he was one of the participants that presented when a few of the local legislators came to Washington County Developmental Disabilities Division. He gave his, you know, shared his experience with case management and how it's helped him. And he's always been really just engaged and he knew about the Washington County Council before, he was just working, he participates in a lot of things, for example, the statewide council as well. So just waiting for the right time for him to apply.
That's great.
Yeah.
He was very impressive.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly, yes.
Yeah, great, well, you'll be back on June 3rd for us to approve all these appointments.
Thank you so much, thank you everyone.
Very much. Next, we will go to Board and Leadership Communication. But before we get into all of that, we have a couple of letters for our consideration. One is with regard to, or one letter, one is with regard to the BEED Broadband Access Program. Do any of you have any questions or comments with regard to approving this letter?
No concerns for me.
Thumbs up for me.
Everybody thumbs up? Okay, great. Thank you Erin for putting that together. The next item is a duplicate set of information for an item later on today's agenda to talk about the state legislature, particularly the transportation package that is part of that. So we'll just leave that for later and move on then to Board Communication and Leadership Communication. Who would like to go first?
I went first last week.
So that would be a no.
Okay, I'll go. So Metro, President Lynn Peterson, with the passage of time, has chosen to reconvene what it first sounded like the counties and metro, but is now back to the same small group configuration to finalize, help advise her in advising the Metro Council in finalizing the ballot measure as well as their other ingredients for their reform ordinance. Commissioner Willie and I will continue our representation on this group. I let her know that we are in a very busy season, so as a result, the timeframe is even more compressed than she had originally envisioned. So our first meeting will be on Friday, May 16th, where I believe she laid out in her phone call to me, the first week we'd be going over their various reform aspects and what if any we had heartburned over and why, and anything that may be missing. The second week or the second meeting would be on the projected numbers. Their interests have not changed, reducing the personal income tax by 25%, which given the distribution and forecasts of the personal and the business means a 14% reduction in revenues. So our staff is looking into that and working to answer the question of what does that do to our essential system for homelessness here in Washington County? And then thirdly, would go over the latest polling to see if there is a path to success on the November ballot. This likely means that we should at least have a work session on the information. It'll be easier to set that up once we've got verification of any information. And, but there may be a sequence of meetings that dovetails on top of our work in June. So Vice Chair Trees may need to testify in Metro Council public hearings while I am away on vacation. But who knows what meetings they'll set up? It could be before I go as well, so stay tuned. Beyond that and a whole bunch of stuff with CWS and reading budgets. It's just a busy time. Okay, who's next? Oh, come on you guys.
Commissioner Willie is tapping me, so I'll go next. Okay. I really, I agree with you Chair Harrington, it's been a busy, busy budget season for me. Lots of reading, had a really great meeting with Clean Water Services Budget Team yesterday to just get my questions in and get some questions answered and just be educated a bit more. And then, and also doing the county budget. I enjoyed our lobby day, everyone. I thought that was really productive visit. And then I also went to Salem again, the following week I think, for transportation, which was organized by J-PAC. But that was also really good meeting. I want to give a shout out to the Government Relations Team of all the jurisdictions involved for both meetings, that they did a really great job, especially for the J-PAC and then our staff for the lobby day for Washington County specifically. One other thing I learned was they, the J-PAC, my meetings for our Washington County didn't include any delegations from the Republican side, but the J-PAC did include and they did have an opportunity to share this plan that was released. So that was a really good productive conversation. So yeah, busy times and all. Great public safety meeting, great library briefing and then obviously reading the balanced budget.
When we had our lobby day, you seemed to have some other meetings other than what we were scheduled for.
That's not true. You help me understand your assumptions. No, I just had a lunch with a friend I ran into.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I can go last, last Monday I had a briefing with our sustainability staff person and also met with the chair to prep for a speaking session at the Sherwood Rotary and then also a briefing on library funding last Tuesday. Had a community corrections briefing and then a public safety levy meeting. I and I were both at, and then that evening I went to the Durham City Council and did my, I'm now getting into a rhythm, Bryn and I both, in how we're conducting these interactions with the city councils during their work sessions and just getting their feedback and having good dialogue. I answered a number of questions that the Durham City Council had and I had never been inside their council chambers, so that was a good experience for me for the first time. On Friday of last week, Chair Harrington spoke at the Sherwood Rotary. I attended and helped participate. And then that evening I attended the Tigerd Chamber of Commerce's Shining Stars Annual Event and that went well. There was a couple of longtime community members, a husband-wife, who were recognized as the first, Tigerd's first citizen and it's a group that's really, this is a, part of why I want to highlight it is they have put thousands of hours into our youth over the last two or three decades. They have no interest in public recognition, but the Tigerd community didn't care about that that night and made sure that they were recognized. So Ralph and Margie Green are who were recognized, so just report that out since they don't like recognition. I'm gonna do it anyway. Last night we had our Acre meeting, which I thought was really, really positive discussion in particular as we, as we work through the future of that, that group. This Thursday I have a one-on-one with Under Sheriff Cook scheduled and then also will, I was asked to attend and sort of just introduce myself to the community at the CPO 15 meeting. So I'm gonna be doing that just as a, hey, this is who I'm, who I am. And then on Saturday, there's a tour at Intel that I'm gonna be doing. I don't know if anyone else is participating, but that's a, I haven't done a lot of facility work there, so I'm interested in that.
But run the acres.
Yeah, I think several of us have done that tour before. I do have it on my calendar, but I'm not sure I'm gonna make that. I'm going to go to the Sheep Way in, it's much more exciting.
Are you gonna try any tips?
Yeah, all right, well, I forgot the real fun one, the weighing of the pigs.
Oh, yes.
Forgot that one. Anyway.
House wine of you.
Sheep seats just to my left. Yeah, there's a number of things, we're all doing our budget studies, I've been doing that as well. But last Monday was the City of Cornelius State of the City Address hosted by the Forest Grove, Cornelius Chamber, so it was a tag team. They'd been doing it that way for the last several years, but this year they individually did theirs and then they did a joint one. So it was well attended, interesting. It's always good to hear and see those two communities really working together and the Forest Grove Chamber has done that and pulled them all together, so doing a great job there. Of course, we had our Clean Water Services meetings, let's see. And Pam and I have been spending a considerable amount of time on the library levy. So thank you Marnie and Lisa for your time that you invest in us and going through all of the, I guess the questions and getting ready for the next round of polling. Katie Riley every year has Washington County Kids After School is Cool Poster Contest, so I am the judge of that, did that last week. And tonight we will be presenting awards for the winners of those two. Had a, this last weekend, if you remember, maybe I can't remember if I said this in a public meeting or not, the Rotary District 5100 requested that we put a piece poll at Wingspan. So we have done that. I have pictures, I was gonna give them to Kevin and I forgot to do that. And then they had their 51, District 5100 Convention, one-day convention this last Saturday at Wingspan. They had about 300 people there, I would guess. It was really well attended and lots of kids that are in Rotary, in the youth program at Rotary. And so it was, it was a great event. The Fair Board Meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night's District 13 Meeting, of course, that we will all be at. We have another library, we are, Pam and I are meeting with Rob Drake and the People for Libraries Group. Just update them on where we are, how we got to where we are, I think, with the library levy and see if they have any questions. And then the Westside Pitch Competition. And the Westside Pitch Competition is for entrepreneurs starting their own business and so they make the pitch and if they win their division, they get some money to help them get started on their, on their new business. So, yeah, so fun and games.
Fun and games.
Fun and games. And then if you really want to go, you can go to the Sambari Trail Foundation Event in Donna Beach on the coast or just a promotional event. I don't think I'll be making that one, but it's available. That's all I got.
Great. Okay. I also attended the Quality and State of the City Address, I think that was mentioned. I also had to go to that Impact Meeting to hear a presentation on Metro Future Vision Scoping. I can give you more information, basically it's, the process has been stretched out. Probably suffice right now.
Into next year?
No. Toward the end of this year. The, there was also a discussion on the TV Highway LPA update and I let the members know that the Washington County Board approved the TV Highway LPA at the previous board meeting. The Lobby Day in Salem was great and I just want to express my appreciation to the staff, where everybody who did all the work getting us to the right places at the right time with the right talking points and I had, I had a very enjoyable day. It was a lot of work, but it was really, I thought it was very well executed. And have received compliments for that execution from legislators. The, after that, we all went to the County Volunteer Appreciation Night. Just want to highlight that and thank you for that. There was some discussion last night at our Acre meeting about the volunteer appreciation night and how there, we should be thinking about volunteer presentations about what different groups do so that there's a cross-pollinization of what volunteer opportunities are. Just thought I'd bring that forward, that there's interest and insight into the concept of volunteering at Washington County. I was not able to attend the ARWAC meeting that was Thursday conflicted with the Lobby Day. I did submit, I worked with Erin Stein and submitted questions to them. Shout out to Maida and to Jason for the local electeds tour of the courthouse that was scheduled and I had a complication, I lost a good friend and that was the memorial service. But I understand that Maida did a great job in organizing it and it was well attended. So thank you very much for that. On, in the afternoon on the next day, I spoke at the COVID Roundtable Discussion. I was invited by Tyrone Henry to speak there about our commitment to the COVID process and the improvement of the COVID process. The state representatives were there as well. Adrian Chilay was there and Tyrone Henry. Quickly, let's see. Acre has been covered. I have a meeting tomorrow for the Executive Committee of Work Systems and then in the afternoon there'll be an ERMDEC meeting and then the evening is the appointment process that the Chair talked about. And we're, I'm working on budgets just like everybody else. Lots of Post-it notes. I'm over my quota. I am over my quota for Post-it notes.
Lot of them.
Leadership.
Well, good morning Chair and Board. So as a reminder, please get us your Post-it notes, Excel spreadsheets or email form of your questions so that we can make sure that we have the opportunity to answer those and compile them and be transparent so we share the learning with both the, all Budget Committee members, but also the entire community as well. Regarding the Public Safety and Library Levy, interviews are beginning this week on a second round of voter surveys regarding the replacement of the Public Safety and Library Levy. The second round will test ballot title language for both measures that your board is scheduled to consider at your June 3rd regular meeting. As a reminder, the third round of voter survey work will happen in July before your board takes final action to file the measures at your board meeting on August 12th. Communications Officer Philip Brandsford will share the questionnaires for both surveys in an email to you later today. Elections update, our Elections Office has sent over four- Our Elections Office has sent over 400,000 ballots to registered voters throughout Washington County for the May 20 election. Elections expect most voters will have received their ballots by tomorrow, May 7. This election includes several races for school boards as well as funding measures for school districts and cities. Ballots mailed back must be postmarked on or before Election Day. No postage is needed when returning your ballot. In addition, voters may drop off their ballots at one of the 21 official ballot drop boxes, all of which are accessible 24 hours a day. Please refer voters to the Washington County website for more information. Voters can also call or email questions to our Elections Office at 503-846-5800. And that concludes my updates. Great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board. I wanted to give you a little update on something we've talked about before, which is the Schwartz Appeal, which is our defense of the flavored ban, or flavored tobacco ban ordinance 78878, pardon me. As you're well aware, we've been fining this across the street at Circuit Court and then at the Court of Appeals. The case is currently scheduled to be heard by the Supreme Court in oral arguments on June 6 at 9:00 a.m. So if you're interested, or I'm sorry, June 5. So if you're interested, we can get you a link so you can watch the oral argument. We were preparing for that. We've submitted our reply, answer brief to the petitioner's brief. We've received their reply. Also, what's interesting in this case is that the state of Oregon and some public health organizations have submitted briefs as amicus or friend of the court and in support of these local ordinances. So that's a good sign at this point, hopefully. We are also preparing by doing a little bit of a moot court internally, so just answering questions, trying to poke holes in our case, see if it still floats. So that's fun for those of us who, you know, went to law school, so.
I'd like that link.
I'm guessing that everybody in your department went to law school.
Yeah, most, most of them. It's fun for us. Also, on a bit of a personal slash Washington County note, my family and I were able to participate in Bike Oregon, or Bike Beaverton on Sunday. It was a really fun event, and it was really fun to see the LUT ambassadors there. I mean, I know they go to many community events, but it was fun for me and made my daughter think everybody knows me in the county, so that. Got to be special in the 10-year-old's eyes for a moment, but it was a really well-done event. I enjoyed those. I hear they're gonna get.
They get.
But it was a wonderful event, a beautiful day, and it was fun to see the LUT team in action. That's it for me.
Okay, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. I really want to thank the Board and the CWAC Budget Committee members for all of the questions that they have sent to the budget team, and they're preparing the answers to share with the budget committee and also with the public. We're looking forward to presenting our proposed budget at the Budget Committee meeting this Friday, May 9, in the first of two meetings. The board discussion last week, we reserved a second meeting for May, Friday, May 23, to continue our discussions. The consideration of rates and charges and the budget adoption is scheduled for Tuesday, June 17. But we also realized that there's more questions and discussion needed on the impact of rates and also our charges, and a June 3 work session for a discussion on the financial forecast and rates and charges has been scheduled for the board to consider options for the June 17 public hearing. I also wanted to update that the board.
I have an update on that. Kevin sent us the rolling agenda yesterday, and it's not on June 3. It's on June 10.
Oh, it moved. Okay.
According to the rolling agenda Kevin sent us.
Yes, that was the last one, and then you had the update, Chair, that you asked for June 3, so it will be on June 3. So that update will be made today.
If you could send us the updated set again, that would be really helpful.
Yes.
Thank you. I also wanted to update the Board that we now have a webpage, and we're accepting applications for the Clean Water Services Audit Committee. We've had applications from community members that are interested in serving, and there'll be a May 27 work session to review the applicants with the board. And we're on track to have the new committee ready and to complete a timely review of the 24-25 audit for Clean Water Services. As you mentioned, Moss Adams is on the consent calendar for our financial auditor. Thank you. That concludes my messages. Most of those other questions?
Director Teresa, it doesn't really do much to raise visibility of that in work session versus the actual business meeting. So did you want to pull that off the consent agenda or once again highlight it for yourself?
I'm fine. I just, given our situation, you know, I'd ask other commissioners for your advice. I just wanted to make sure the public knew the difference between that audit and what we've been talking about in relationship to the RNO.
That's my point.
Yeah.
This is essentially our public at the moment, which, as you can see, is all staff. So I think the business meeting where the action is taken is probably a more appropriate place.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Certainly more busy.
Yes, okay. So you're asking to, I can ask to remove it from the consent agenda, and I'll do that, please.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we will adjourn and convene at 10 o'clock for the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting and then our regular business meeting right after that. We are slated to return to our work session here at 1:00. Thank you.